Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, July 2, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heike.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
D'Beek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you, Kevin. It's our practice to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the chambers of the city council meeting. We have many citizens here tonight. We have a couple of public hearings. I'd like to welcome, I see we have two county commissioners here and our county administrators, so welcome. To the citizens at home who are watching, good evening, and I hope this is a healthy and enjoyable July 4 weekend. We've just come off a Wilmer Fest weekend, and we had a wonderful four days of good weather and great activities and very few problems, so we're very grateful that Wilmer Fest has come and gone, and it was a very successful event for our whole community. Tonight, we have two public hearings. One is dealing with rezoning, or the ordinance to rezone certain property for the GESH property. We have a second public hearing for another ordinance to rezone property at the request of the Mr. and Mrs. Donner. With that, I'll now ask the city council if they have any additions, or changes, or deletions to the agenda for tonight. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor. Second?
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items, usually minutes of meetings, that happen in between the council meetings. Tonight, the consent agenda includes the city council minutes of June 18, the hospital board minutes of June 13, the planning commission of June 27, the minutes of the Community Ed and Recreation Advisory Council of May 25, and also an application from the Knights of Columbus for a permit. Councilmembers, is there anyone who wishes to discuss anything on the consent agenda? Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to pull the planning commission minutes of June 27, 2007.
All right. Anything else? If not, those in favor approving the rest of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Mr. Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on, I talked with Megan today, and it deals with the First Baptist Church Plan Review. I understand that Stacy's nursery is in the process of drawing up the plan that will take care of the shielding of the parking lot from the two longtime residents there, Mr. Walcher and Mrs. Westry, so we ensure that their property is properly screened?
That is what the church representatives have told staff and the planning commission. We will await those plans from the nursery to review them for their adequacy.
Okay. Thank you. I know that they're very concerned about it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I move to approve these minutes.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission minutes of June 27. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next is the first public hearing scheduled for tonight, and at this time, I will open the public hearing. This has to do with an ordinance to rezone certain property from agriculture to residential two. It is better known as the GESH properties issue. Bruce, would you introduce us and explain what this is all about? Bruce Peterson is the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Wilmer. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. The proposal from the GESH properties is to rezone their property that lies south of Olina Avenue, east of 12th Street Southeast, west of Lakeland Drive, and north of Wilmer Avenue, from AEG and R2 to a limited business classification. I want to stress that change because the executive summary has it correct, the agenda has a misprint. So the property is currently partially zoned R2, partially zoned AEG, and the proposal is to rezone it all to LB, which is a limited business. This property includes not only the GESH Farm property, but the YMCA property as well. The purpose for the rezoning is to allow the family to proceed with development of the property for professional and commercial uses. The planning commission conducted a public hearing several weeks ago and approved the rezoning and transmitted the matter to the council for your ordinance consideration.
Thank you, Bruce. This is a public hearing, and the procedure here tonight is I will allow citizens to come up to this podium right here and make comments or ask questions. Would like you to do it.
Jerry GESH, 1200 Southeast Wilmer Avenue, representing my family of GESH Properties. I'm Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman. They, we would like to rezone this to commercial and professional use, or for limited business. We just feel this is the progression of our community and a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Jerry, before you walk away, do any councilmembers wish to ask any questions of Mr. GESH? All right. They may ask him later, then. Anyone else in the audience wish to make any comments or ask any questions? Please come up to the podium.
Tammy Duescher, 913 Olina Avenue, Mayor Heike and members of the city council. We are here tonight, and there's a few of my neighbors here. We are, we're happy with you to rezone part of the land. We'd like the 11th, or, let's see, the 11th Avenue to Olina, that little tiny section, kept residential. We'd like, like a nice little homes there, rather than that all coming to become limited business. Just that little tiny section, and I know none of you probably have a map, they did have a map at our last one. But we'd like to keep that as a neighborhood-friendly neighborhood. When we moved in there, we all had the understanding that it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and we all liked it. We do know that if you do commercial, that a 16th ed mental health unit will be placed there, and that would only be 150 feet from the Jorgensen's backyard, which I don't think anybody would like that in their backyard. We elected you to be our voices, and so I'm asking you to listen to our voices and reconsider zoning just part of that, the limited business. I don't know if you can go back, and when we went to the commissioners' meeting at the fire hall, it was all or nothing. Well, so we're asking you to consider, to ask them to go back and say, hey, how about just keeping part of it, the residential, and part of it, limited business. We all pay taxes, we all have a right to be heard, and I hope that some of my other neighbors will stand up and let you know how they feel. But we'd like to keep it a small, neighborhood-friendly. Thank you.
Tammy, before you leave, any councilmembers wish to ask any questions? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your testimony, Tammy. Would you please describe to me again, I just got the map out here, of what, you're talking between 11th and Olina, one block?
Let me, and I do have some petitions that I've signed. I don't know if you want that now, or when you'd like that.
You can give the petitions to our city clerk over here.
Okay. I gotta find my.
Tammy, if you want, you could just sit in the chair and kind of get your papers organized, and I'll have you come back up to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Get, find your papers, and then I'll call you back up, Tammy. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, please, come on up.
My name is Darren Heimer. I live at 1004 12th Street Southeast. Maybe I can help elaborate and answer Mr. Christiansen's question for him as well. The land in question that Tammy was referring to is if you ran a parallel line down 11th Avenue and continued it all the way to Lakeland Drive, basically running almost through the YMCA there, everything north of that, if that was to be kept residential, is kind of what we're looking for. There's a slew in there that takes up part of that land already. Nobody really has any issue with turning the land that faces and is adjacent to Wilmer Avenue down there across from Truisher Construction, and the, and the Bread Company there is into business, and, you know, putting in commercial-type businesses there. The, where it gets to be an issue is when it start getting back close to the YMCA and all the houses in GESH Park right there. We'd like to keep that as residential land and not put a mental health facility in there. I don't know, you know, there was a gentleman from the state that came out a couple days ago and met with a couple of us down by the end of 11th Avenue, and he elaborated on some of the reasons why they wouldn't put a mental health facility next to certain types of businesses, and one of them are different, different types of things, and one thing he said is we'd never put one next to an elementary school. And I don't know about any of you, but my kids go to the YMCA, many kids from the neighborhood walk to the YMCA. That's a very busy path down that, what is Olina Avenue now, down that sidewalk, kids walking from town out to the YMCA, and I think that's where the biggest issues come from people, is having this facility right next to, you know, what is considered probably one of the nicest things and best things for our children to go to, to keep them out of trouble. He said that there'd be no fence around this facility unless they'd have to put up a nuisance fence to try to keep kids, and I'm going to use his words, this is what he said, from being over there yelling at people in the nut hut. So, I mean, this is a gentleman from the state that came out and made these statements to me and one of my neighbors here, and their idea was to put up a hedge so that people couldn't see it and build a berm, you know, to kind of keep it, because if you look out my front windows, where they're planning on putting this facility, it'd be right straight out the windows and across the street from me. So, I mean, I have kind of a vested interest in trying to keep my property value up, and I would really rather not see this every day when I look out my front window. That's all I got. Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, Darren. Tammy, did you get your papers?
He kind of told you, he kind of told you where it was at, and I did find the map, and that's, may I?
Please, go ahead.
Present it to you guys? This is the one that we were given to the states, and what we would like, I'll show you each of them. This is Olina, which runs this way. We'd like this partial land, just kept where they're showing us where the hospital's going to be, to be kept residential, and then the YMCA is right over here.
Would you take that over to our city clerk and show it to him, too, please?
This is what we would like to keep residential. I can see a nice cul-de-sac being built there, and some really nice homes being put there and stuff, which would keep us as a friendly neighborhood, keep our property value up, you know, making it look nice. We're not questioning that, yes, there is a need for this mental health unit, but keep it in, you know, a little bit better than our, right in our backyards. They also told us at the meeting that there was one in Cold Springs. Well, I went and checked it out. They told me it was close to a residential. Guess what, guys? It's not. There will be no residential houses being built by it, because it's, the sign that says is it's for commercial businesses. And so there is no homes. I've called somebody from Cold Springs that I know, and they said if there's any houses, there's probably three or four. I couldn't find any houses nearby. There's houses back quite a ways, but the businesses are first, and then the homes. So there's no way that, there's that great big barrier. So, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else in the audience? Please, come on up.
My name's Corey Johnson. I live at 913 11th Avenue Southeast. I just have a problem with it being built, a mental health unit being built in a residential area next to a ball field, next to a park for kids, next to the YMCA. I guess, it's just, that's, that's, I don't care, I mean, you can rezone the property. You can put businesses in there, that's fine, you know. I don't care about that, that's fine, but just not the mental health institution, that's just not a good place for it. Anywhere else, I mean, I look around town, I look at even like Elm Lane, what's wrong with that site? It's an open site that a mental health institution could go. It's already zoned for that, I'm sure, so I'm just looking at other places where this could go, and just not in a residential area, please. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Corey, for your comments. Anyone else? Please?
Jay Jorgensen. It's 1200 11th Avenue Southeast. I live right in the corner of where this, basically, my house would be probably one of the closest to this, and I understand this meeting is, is to have it rezoned as limited business. We all, well, we all kind of know if it does go limited business, that more than likely this hospital will go in there. I guess if we could get it to stop now, before it went to the next step, and got to the point where it perhaps maybe even passed that, I think that's what maybe perhaps some of the people that are sitting behind me want to do, is to stop this before it gets to the next step. Businesses are good to have there. The gentleman that just talked to me, or that just talked before me, you know, I mean, he said a lot of good things. I mean, there's a baseball park right there, you got the YMCA, and of course, you got the residential area there, too, so, you know, it's, it's kind of a bad thing, but, you know, we have to come to a conclusion on what we, and I think, I think the residents should have a say in what happens here, too. I mean, and that's, and that's my feelings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else wish to comment? John, come on up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I wasn't going to do this, but I just have one thing I just don't know if it's been thought about, or what to do. You are rezoning this whole acreage, did I take it from Lakeland down to the old GESH Homestead property line, approximately, right?
Yes.
Okay. You originally wanted this mental hospital on Wilmer Avenue on the old Kendall Hall property. I was just thinking the GESH Homestead property, which is already buffered by trees on the west and on the north, and it's a better highway, better access off of Wilmer Avenue, than putting it over there by all the homes. And it's just a suggestion, is all it is. But I think if you're rezoning that whole property, you're taking into consideration better access and less hostility, I guess, but it's just a point.
Thank you, John.
What was his name?
John, what's your last name?
Excuse me. 508 Southeast 13th Street.
John, what's your last name?
John Sullivan.
Sullivan, that's right.
And just so you know, I live right across from Olina. If they took off, if they broke out of there, my house would probably be the first one north they'd hit. So, and I'm not concerned about that, but I just think it's a better site.
All right. Thank you, John. Anyone else? Steve, please?
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name's Steve Renquist. I work for the Academic Development Commission, and I live at 3106 Eagle Ridge Drive West. I want to speak, others will speak for and against the mental health hospital. I want to speak for the need for additional commercial and professional property. In many ways, I have a rather direct and simple job, and that's to increase the tax base and to increase the number of jobs that we have in Wilmer, in Kendall High County. To be able to do that, I need to have property that's desirable for businesses, and for all kinds of businesses. And I found, this is the second time recently now, that I've been, I've had people speak out against projects that would, this particular project won't create an abundance of tax base, but it would create jobs and valuable jobs, and give services to people, people of need. And we have people, and we have good people who predominantly live in the area, saying, well, fine, we need this, just not in my backyard. But if we go out into the county, we go, no, we don't want this out into the county, and we call it urban sprawl. And we say, well, we're going to force it in areas that where this should go, whether it's industrial projects, or whether it's retail projects, or whether it's commercial projects. And we find that people that have the decision-making ability of where they're going to put these projects, this project could be in Benson, it could be in Montevideo, it could be in Worthington, and we're going to tell the state, you can't put it where you want to put it. You need to put it where we're going to force you to put it. And the state will say, thank you very much, as they pack their bags, and a bunch of good jobs just leave our city, just as recently happened in possibly with, with another project. And if we're going to grow our city and grow our county, we're going to do it with jobs and places for those jobs to be created. And I don't know if we draw the line in the sand on this particular project, but we've got to have places. And we can't have every time a new site comes up, we can't have, we can't have a bunch of residents in and near that site saying, not here. So...
Excuse me. This is a public hearing. You speak out like that again, I'll have the chief escort you out of the room.
So I'm, I've, I'm hoping that we find a place for this and for all of our, of our projects, and I understand people will be opposed to it, but I also understand that this is the 10th one of these projects that they've built. And wherever they build them, there's an outcry like this, and then six months after they're built, they're never heard from again. So I would, I would say, let's discuss the issue based on the facts, not on a motion. Thank you much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wish to speak or ask questions? Please, come on up.
Mike Holmes, 1101 11th Avenue Southeast. I was just kind of concerned, I guess, when I read it about this in the paper, it was brought to my attention, there was at least 12 of their sites that were open to this possibility, and I was just kind of wondering, I guess, myself, how this could be the best site when, first of all, we have to try to hide it with landscaping, and then also build a fence around it. That's all I had.
All right, Mike, thank you. Anyone else? Please.
My name is Ed Pittson. I live on 12, 12th Street Southeast, 1005, and I guess I have a lot of concerns about, about the hospital, but I guess we aren't supposed to be talking about that right now, it's just a zoning, so I just felt this is not an appropriate place for, the place, for, appropriate place for this, what's coming up in the future with the hospital. So I know I've talked to a few of you, and just voiced my concerns already, so I just hope that you can consider my concerns, and I guess that's, I think there is better locations for this facility.
Ed, could I ask you, could you expand why, expand your comments about why you don't think this is an appropriate site?
Well, I think there's, I have concerns about staffing. I mean, I know there's a problem with psychiatrists, getting available psychiatrists, and I think there's, there's issues with that, and, and I think it's too residential with the park and the YMCA, and too close to homes. I called up the one in Cold Spring. The one in Cold Spring is in a business park, the one in Annandale's in a business park, and so I've, I've did some checking on my own. I don't know about the other areas, but I think the areas where they've had the most concerns is where it's been placed in a residential area.
All right. Thank you.
And I know, well, just another comment, I know most of the, a lot of the group homes where there's been a lot of behaviors, they usually, I mean, nothing, because I have a couple group homes of my own, so I have a lot of sympathy for these situations, but normally, they try to get to situations where it's not right in residential area, because it's great conflicts with neighbors, and there's always a potential risk.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to make any comments or ask any questions? Did you want to say something more? No? I just didn't want you interrupting another speaker. Do you want to say something else? You're welcome.
First, I'd like to apologize for speaking out. It is a very emotional issue, and we're not real sure on, I mean, if this is the do-all, end-all meeting, I mean, if this goes through, the check is cut, it's going to be, it's going to start to move on, you know. I'd have liked to have had some meetings earlier in the progression as to about this, where people could have spoke out about it. It seems to me that everything right now is pretty much cut and dry, and there's already a plan to build on this land, what's going there, how many people it'll affect, the access to the road. The surveyor's been out there over a month ago. I had a young man pull up on a four-wheeler in my front yard and start putting stakes in, and I asked him, and he said, oh, I'm from Bonham, I'm surveying, I'm surveying out this land, and I didn't know what I was doing it for at the time. I had no idea that, you know, what he was doing was surveying out this area of land to be able to put a mental health facility there. I just think that, you know, it's, I wouldn't say it's shady, but it's almost like, you know, we're doing things behind doors, getting this all ready, and it's just going to all of a sudden go forward if this goes through, so that's why I think there's a lot of emotions from a lot of the neighbors tonight as to trying to stop this when we can, and, you know, the not in my backyard thing, that's just not for the people living right there. I have concerns for any of the kids from anywhere that would ride their bikes to the YMCA, or go to play baseball at the field right there. It's, to me, I mean, I'm not a city planner or anything like that, but somebody said that, you know, you have the land that used to be Elm Lane, there's a very large tract of land right next to the Harvey Anderson Funeral Home, there's land on, on the west side of the Holiday Inn, right next to the car dealership there, there's land on the east side of the American Inn. I mean, this is just from driving around town. You can, you can see spots that would be plenty big enough to do this, that are a lot more buffered by businesses or commercial lots, where you're not going to have as much children traffic, I guess would be the right word for it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else know? Tammy, yes?
Yes. The meeting that we went to, they did say that there were 19 other sites that they had looked into. So there is possibility. So when he said that, you know, we're telling the state, well, we got to tell you where to build it, that's not so. They've just looked in to, you know, this one, and this wasn't even the one of the top five spots. The top one, I can't even remember where it was at, they haven't even looked at that site. But there were like 19 or 21 different sites that they had originally proposed, you know, or looked at and stuff, and like I said, this Olina Avenue, 12th Street was not in the top five. Okay?
Thank you. Does anyone from the county wish to make any comments about this? All right, I'm about ready to close the public hearing unless somebody else wants to say something, and then the matter comes up to the city council. Last chance. All right. The public hearing is now closed. Now the matter comes up to the table here with the city council... Now the matter comes up to the table here with the city council members for their discussion. Councilmember Reese.
Mr. Mayor, I, there's been a lot of comments made by the public in regards to the location and the sites and how the sites were determined. Tammy is saying that it wasn't in, that this wasn't in the top five, that there's, one person said there was 12 other sites, and there were 19 other sites, and I guess I would either like Mr. Rehnquist or one of our county commissioners or our new county coordinator to comment in regards to the selection of the property and what kind of process they went through and what sites were deter, how this site was determined to be the right site.
Mr. Rehnquist, do you want to comment on that?
Absolutely, Mayor and council. The, at the early stages, the Economic Development Commission was the local proponent, I guess might be the word, for the project. And they are, those that said 19 sites are correct. We prepared 19 different sites for the state to look at. And they did tour the entire city and nearby surrounding area where we showed them all of these sites, and actually sent in a couple more, so it probably would have reached 20 or 21 sites altogether. And they did look at them. Now, I, the state had its own worksheet by which they made the site identification. We know that the old, if I'm pronouncing it right, Kendall Hope Site was their number one selection, and it just didn't work out. There were soil corrections, and the total cost just got to the point where it was a non-viable site. And this, Tammy, I'll just look at you, this was their number two, their number two selected. The EDC staff originally pointed out a site over by the tennis courts and the ball fields over by the park, and were quickly told that that wasn't going to work. But this was the number two site of what the site looked, of the state looked at, and they did look at, which probably ended up eventually being 20 or 21 sites, but they thoroughly examined them. I cannot give their reasons. I always accepted that, you know, they had, you know, specific criteria they were looking for, and I didn't try and push them into any one site or another. And I'll just let it, I think that answers the question.
That answer enough?
Yeah, that answers that question, and I guess there were some comments also made in regards to the landscaping and the building of the fence. And I don't know, Bruce, do you want to comment on that?
Mayor Heike, councilmember Reese. It's difficult to comment on the issue of screening and fencing because we don't even have a proposal in front of us, other than to rezone some property for commercial development. Suffice it to say that when the planning commission looks at a particular use, they will do what they can within their authority to make sure that the compatibility is as great as possible. Sometimes that means fencing, sometimes it means screening, sometimes it means distant separation. But I think it's clear that, from the past history of the planning commission, that they take that very seriously, and that all efforts are made, again, within the scope of their authority, to ensure as great a degree as compatibility as possible.
Go ahead.
One more question, comment was made that this would be from Jay's home, 150 feet. Is that correct? How, what's 150 feet? Is that to the corner of the building? Is that to the front entrance?
Sure. Come up to the microphone.
My name is Jay Jorgensen again, and it is, it's approximately 90 feet, and it's actually from my edge of my, what would be the eastern side of my lot, to the western end of the wing of this hospital. So it's 90 feet between my property and a door that would come out the western side wing of it. And the only reason I say that is because we had a little meeting last Wednesday, and I, Larry was there, and Al and Steve, some of the people that were talking to me about this, and we talked about some different things, about some screening and some shrubbery and stuff, so that's the only reason I know that. It's 90 feet, and I'm sure Larry can agree with that. It's 90 feet from basically my eastern lot to the western edge of the wing, of the west wing of the hospital.
Anything else right now, Doug?
No, not right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I want to thank all of you people that came out tonight, both those who are for this, those who are against it. I reflect back to Mr. Lincoln in 1863, when he said that government was of the people, by the people, and for the people. This seems to me that this is government of the government, by the government, and for the government, because we have lacked from the outset any public hearings. I brought to the council's attention and the public's attention that we received the League of Minnesota Cities booklet, in which four major articles talk about the public, the necessity of putting the public into public policymaking. You are hearing from the public tonight. I think we have to be open to listening to what they are saying, because they have concerns. We represent them. We are their servants, whether you choose to believe this or not. When you knock on their door and say, "My name is Jim Dawkins, I'd like to be your voice," you ought to believe that and say that when they have a concern, that you're going to do the best you can for them. This has been around since, I have the minutes of the Joint Operations Board from September the 14th, when it was first addressed, 16-bed adult psychiatric hospital. That's nine months ago. We've had two meetings, one at the fire department and now one here at the chamber. My question is, why didn't we involve the public sooner? Did we pass this list of whatever number of sites along to the planning commission so that the planning commission could look at it to determine which sites they thought would be best for the city from the standpoint of the comprehensive plan, which I might add is 20 years old? We're now in the process of changing it. We need to start listening to the public, and that's all I have to say at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Swenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank everyone for coming, and I would probably be sitting where you are with concerns. I have two personal experiences to draw from in my own life, and two things that I've heard come out, and I just want to address for these people that have the fears of the unknown and also the fear of property values, wherever this ends up, whether it's, you know, in this neighborhood or another one. I grew up for most of my life, or half my life, about 100 yards from the WRTC, the Treatment Center, then called the State Hospital. And both my parents worked there, and it was a lovely neighborhood to grow up in. There were no fears, and my parents both, knowing what all the people were capable of, the different patients, we roamed all over, all over the neighborhood, I shouldn't say this unsupervised, probably, going on bike rides, either by myself or with friends, as a nine and 10 and 11-year-old, through the Treatment Center. And I think it was locked for part of that time and then unlocked facility as well. I'd have to check my facts, but just the fears of that, not that they're not substantiated, because there is unpredictability, but my experience was very positive. It was a very nice place to grow up. And secondly, to my knowledge, the property values were not affected at all. But I appreciate and I understand your concerns, and I just wanted to share my experience. I had a positive experience growing up in that neighborhood.
Any other comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be clear here on the area that we're talking about. I see on the map that Bruce handed out, it's, to the west, there's no description on the public hearing, but it is bounded by 12th Street, is that where it ends, and then directly down to Wilmer Avenue?
Bruce, can you help us on that?
It would not be 12th Street, it would be one tier of lots east of 12th Street.
And then directly south to Wilmer Avenue?
That's correct.
So we're not, we're not even talking about that empty space that Gesh's, I presume, own further west of there. It's just that...
Well, there's very little property, you know, and on this scale map, it's difficult to show it, but it would be everything east of Bethesda and east of the developed residential neighborhood.
Okay. It's that highlighted area that you got on there, minus one block east of 12th.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. And just a comment for councilmember Dawkins, representing the public. I believe that Mr. Gesh is also part of the public, and he's asking us to rezone his property. I think that's quite proper. We also need to listen to him. He's wanting to rezone his property, and if it meets his requirements, he can do with it as he wishes, I guess, but it is zoning we're dealing with tonight, and we have to keep that in mind.
Councilmember Fagerley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the people for coming out tonight also. Just a couple of questions. Alina, is that a county state aid road, Mr. Peterson? No? Will we have to make that a truck route so they can get deliveries in, food, linen, whatever they take?
This is Mel Odens, our city engineer. Mel, go ahead.
Councilman Fagerley, members of the council, I'm not aware of how much truck traffic would need to be, but you would have to, initially, we would not look at making it a state aid. You'd have to do a delivery from Lakeland and then back to Lakeland.
How would they get in? If you put a hospital, mental health hospital, to the far west, how are they going to get in from Lakeland?
I guess I've not seen a site plan on that, but I assume that there would be an access off of Alina.
Off Alina?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's not a truck route?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm hearing, the people aren't opposed to it, they just want it facing Wilmer Avenue. And I kind of agree with them. I don't know why we'd put something adjacent to a residential area. And then the YMCA, that wasn't zoned LB already? Is that just AEG, and they just stuck it there, or what?
The YMCA was zoned R2. That's what they had requested when the property was rezoned. It's a much better fit in a limited business district. It would have more restrictions in a residential district than it would have in a limited business district.
Okay. And then the meeting we had at the fire station, when one of the state reps were there, he said this property would definitely be fenced in. It would be a screened-type fence, you wouldn't really be able to see it. And I know someone asked, "Was that for the residents' sake or for the property owners, neighbors?"
I don't recall ever hearing that said. I do know that they'd talked about a very small fenced area behind the facility.
Backyard, yeah.
Yeah.
And it was going to be a locked facility.
Yeah, but I've not seen or heard any discussion of fencing the entire site. That's...
Well, the backyard, wherever, they could go for fresh air.
Yeah, that's a very small area. Probably half the size of this room.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that this is about rezoning. I also understand that the public is here because they understand that this is a site that has been chosen by the state for a particular project. With that in mind, I took some time, and I called every single one of the existing community behavioral health hospitals, talked to their staff. Six of the nine existing are in residential areas. Baxter just opened theirs in January. There were a number of conditions that their city council placed upon the operation of that site. And certainly, if the zoning is approved tonight, there will have to be, and Mr. Peterson can correct me if I'm wrong, there would be a hearing on a conditional use permit for this property. The city of Anandale has at least 21 different requirements that they required of the facility in their community, and theirs is located in a business park. I understand how hard it is to wonder what might happen. I might drive home after this meeting tonight and be killed by a drunk driver. You can't quantify what might happen. But my question is, if we're only to listen to those who have legitimate concerns, my question is, what do we do for those people who don't have a voice in this? For the people who are in our community that need these services? And I know some of them. And my question is, is the community better off having them in a facility where they can be served and taken care of? Or do we leave them out in the community and not take care of their needs? Are we safer when we do that? Or are we safer and is the community better because we're taking care of those folks who aren't here tonight, who don't have necessarily a voice in this? I understand, again, that this is simply about zoning, but the fact of the matter is, is that the two kind of are intertwined. I want to be sensitive to the residents, but I think our issue tonight is the rezoning and any other issues that come up later when there's a proposal in front of the planning commission and in front of this body. There are all sorts of conditions, I'm certain, that would be put on a facility like this. No one is going to be able to guarantee 100% safety, no matter what we put there. But we can do our very best to make sure that as many of the concerns that anybody in this city has regarding any type of project are taken care of, and that's our job. So it's not just you folks that we represent, but it's the folks who would be served by this facility as well. And I hope that we keep that in mind in our deliberations.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to the folks that came out tonight. This is another one of these situations that we find ourselves in oftentimes, where we have impacted neighbors that are very, very concerned and upset about what may or may not happen in their neighborhood. And we've also got to look at what's best for our community. We heard from 10 or 12 people out of the total population of Wilmer, and there are more out there that probably feel the same way, but our job is twofold, and maybe even more than that, and it's difficult to weigh what a certain select group of residents are saying and what their concerns are against what's in the best interest of the overall city. And we have to weigh that. We can't just go based on what a few people are telling us. We need to look at what's the best situation for the city overall. We need to look at what, what's the best situation for the city overall. Couple of ironies that I, that I see in this tonight. One, there's been a lot of conversation about the YMCA, and I haven't heard anything from the YMCA that they are for or against this. I, I would suspect if they had a serious concern, we would have heard about that. They haven't come forward. The other thing is, we have maybe not an identical situation, but we have the Woodland Centers that takes in, in residents that are in crisis. That's located in a residential area. There's a junior high right nearby. There's a shopping center not too far away, and there are a number of churches. And I haven't heard that that's such a terrible location for that facility. So I'm, I'm, I'm really in a quandary, um, and, and don't want to overreact and, and tell the state, no, you can't put this where you have decided is the best location. We need to, we need to have some careful deliberation, but my thinking is that we probably should rezon this property.
Anyone else?
I have a question, uh, for Larry Kline, if you wouldn't mind, Larry. Do you have a, an estimate? Larry is the county administrator. Larry, do you have an estimate of the number of either permitted or licensed group homes in the county? How many do we have all over the county?
Approximately 120.
And do you have any idea how many we have in the city of Wilmer?
I would imagine, um, probably 112.
112 group homes. And th- these are for people with developmental disabilities and mental illness?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here? I'm going to ask the council if they wish to make a motion in just a second, but I, I do want to state, especially to this gentleman, that in my role here, I manage this meeting and I, just as I confronted you about interfering with another person at the, at the podium, I would have done the same for you if somebody had interrupted you. So I, I didn't mean to be harsh, but I want the meeting to go smoothly and everybody needs to be respected, so, thank you. Council, do you wish to make a motion on this matter? Councilmember Anderson?
I move that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Second.
There is a motion on the table and it's been seconded, that this ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published in the paper. Further comment from council members?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um...
Councilmember Reese?
This is in my ward, um, and we're looking at the specific rezoning of property at this moment and not at the state hospital or the mental health facility. This is the second time in a month that we've had to make some hard decisions and, um, decisions that aren't always that popular. I think Dennis put it very well, we have to look at the overall good of the community. And, uh, looking at the Woodland Centers, I think that was a very good example. Cindy, I appreciate your input too in regards to your growing up next to the, uh, state hospital. I also look back at, um, Mr. Renquist's comment that we need to, uh, look at the facts and not deal with this on emotion. And then also Mr. Gardner's points in regards to the fact that this is a rezoning and that any further development of that property will still have to go through the proper channels and will still come back to the city council. So, um, even though it may be an unpopular decision with residents within my ward, I do support this, um, for I see it as supplying a need to people that are in need. I also see it supplying, um, jobs and good paying jobs. We lost a lot of good paying jobs when the regional treatment center shut down and, and moved services, uh, in different cities, and people had to leave. And some people lost jobs. And I think that these jobs, uh, are going to be very valuable within the city and good for the city as a whole. So, um, I will speak in favor of this, Mr. Mayor and city council members.
Any other comments before the vote? If not, roll call. Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
No.
Fagerly?
No.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
The, uh, resolution passes. Uh, the number will be, or the ordinance will be adopted, be given a number and published. I, I too want to thank the citizens who came here tonight to share their comments. Uh, it's not always, the end result is not always what people expect or want, but it is the democratic process, and thank you for your attendance. I'm going to request that we take a five-minute, uh, recess, uh, in case some people want to step out. Uh, the second public hearing is now open, and this has to do with a new ordinance to rezon property from R4 to general business. It's known as the William and Deborah Donner, uh, request. Bruce, would you introduce this for us, please?
Mayor, hi, and members of the council. William and Deborah Donner of New London have proposed rezoning property that they own east of the current Donnerite building, which as you will recall, is their, uh, recently remodeled and reoccupied pomita building. Their proposal is to rezon that acreage from R4 to, uh, which is a medium-density multifamily classification to general business for the purpose of retail development. This rezoning would square up the commercial property and would continue it along the rear line of the Donnerite property out to Lakeland Drive. The planning commission has reviewed this matter, they conducted a public hearing on this matter, and has approved it and has transmitted this issue to the council for your ordinance.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment about this or ask any questions? Is there anybody here from the Donner, uh, representing Donners? Are you Mr. Donner?
No, Mr. Donner is...
You are? Do you want to make any comments about this request at all?
If there's any comments, Nina, uh, Bruce signed up, uh, you know, what we need to do with that topic, you know, with that, you know.
All right. Standby, there might be some questions from the council. If there's no one else, I will close the public hearing, and now it comes up to the city council. Council members? Councilmember Christensen?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance to rezon property from R4, which is residential four, to general business, uh, known as a William and Deborah Donner, uh, request.
Further comment about the motion? Brown, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Bruce, if you could, uh, clarify the difference between general business and limited business. We just dealt with limited business. What's the major difference between GB and LB?
Limited business is a much less intense classification. That's where you typically find primarily office development, uh, professional development, medical facilities, dental facilities, those types of uses. In the general business district, it's pretty much wide open for retail, uh, service uses. Uh, there could be contractor shops, just automobile dealerships, a variety of activities that would be allowed in the general business district. And those are typically associated with, uh, the heavily traffic, the heavily traveled corridors, primarily the highways, uh, the arterial routes within the community.
So general business is, is like storefronts, basically, where people are coming and going for buying purposes?
It's a good description.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments here? Uh, Mr. Donner, are you, uh, do you desire to tell us what you intend to do here, or you're asking for the rezoning, but do you want to share your next steps at all or not?
Yeah, at this point, you know, we're not quite sure what we're going to do with this, but eventually, yeah, we might develop and put some retail, uh, storefronts on there. Um, you know, up to like three businesses potentially, so...
All right, thank you. Councilmember DeBlick?
That area out there, Bruce, is that, that is all, uh, open right now? There's not, no buildings, there's structures on it?
There is one house and a garage. It sits way off of Lakeland Drive that's on this property. It's a single-family home that sits between, I think it's the Meadowbrook Apartments and West Side Liquors.
All right, is the council ready to vote on this matter? We have a motion and a second for this, uh, resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes, the ordinance is adopted, and it'll be, uh, given a number and published. Good luck with your plans. Uh, next on the agenda is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum, and I have a, a list of people who signed in here. Most of them have already spoken, uh, at the first public hearing, but there is a Mr. Richard Hile. Are you, is it Richard or Dick?
Why don't you call me Richard Hile?
Come on up, Richard, and, uh, tell us what's on your mind and, uh, what you're about.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for approving my license to be a taxi driver and, and operate a taxi business in your community. And I think that, um, part of that application process included certain things that I had to do to operate a responsible business, and I think that those were very, um, well thought of and, um, and it was, um, a good application. I can understand the city code and thereof. Um, however, some of those things, as part of operating a responsible business, this requires, um, expenses and such as insurance, carrying the right kind of insurance and other, um, aspects, for instance, um, maintaining a, a reasonable and capable vehicle. These are all, uh, expenses that have to be, you know, carried as part of operating a taxi in your community. And I think that your community is growing and it's doing well. Um, however, I am competing against a number of overlapping services, and I'm just wondering if I'm going to be able to survive with those overlapping services. And, um, some of those are going to be coming into effect fairly soon with the RideNet, et cetera. Um, and I'm, basically, I'm seeing my business flounder. In fact, I'm, I'm wondering if I'm going to be able to survive much longer in this community, even though I've only been here like roughly a week, I still have to maintain a certain amount of economics. You know, I, I have an economically driven business that has to maintain steady income. And without the community's support, without the business support of this community, it is impossible for me to operate a cab. I can maybe go out and get a, a junk car, but I don't think that that would be what you want to see happen. For instance, I think that it would be better for me just to take my business and go to some other place where they have less overlapping services, et cetera. However, I think that it, it is, um, before you make a radical move, what you do is you go to the powers that be and you express, you know, what your situation is and say, well, you're the experts, your government does what the normal person can't do. That's why we, you know, elect public officials and have a government. And then I'm going to also talk to the business people in this community about maybe your insights as to all and what I can do to try to keep this business going. And so therefore, I'm bringing it to you in early stages, um, that this business is, like I said, economically driven, and we have to find ways to help this thing go. Because I think in the long haul, it's going to save your city and a lot of, uh, your citizens a lot of trouble. If, um, a cab service is going, it will save you a lot of trouble. And I think that this is, uh, something that I should, you know, um, bring forward to you right at this stage. I don't think that, uh, you're going to be able to get certainly in the night type service, you know, beyond 10 o'clock unless I'm here. And so I'm going to try to offer that kind of service because I had been a cab driver for like 16 years and much of it was, you know, during the middle of the night. I helped a lot of people out, et cetera, but I was a city driver and, um, but I think that this, uh, this community could use that kind of service, certainly after 10 o'clock, you need taxi service. But we, I just don't know how to promote it and to get the public to accept it and, and start to work with, uh, my business. And I'm the only taxi driver as I see, and I don't think that there's going to be another taxi driver or a taxi business coming along for quite some time. Um, so I do think that at this point, I'm hoping that maybe the, uh, this business, uh, community and also the government can put their heads together and maybe get along and interact with myself to try to keep this business going. I think that, uh, it, this is the, the proper move to make at this point. But I do think that at this point, um, if I do not see the public accepting this business and starting to work with me, that this business will flounder and I will have to, uh, vacate this area. And I do know of another area that is seeking taxi service and they don't have this kind of overlapping services, uh, for instance, like CAT and, uh, RideNet, et cetera. Um, and I may be a better fit in that area. However, before I do that, um, I think that this is a fine area and it, and with the right kind of input from this, you know, from the government and from the business community and the public, that, um, I could, uh, develop a very fine business here that will help your, you know, community grow and with it I can grow as in a, you know, as one of the people who live in this community.
Thank you, Richard. Any council members want to ask any questions here? Councilmember Anderson? Thanks for bringing that up. Really interesting point. Have, have you done any advertising, um, as yet as to what your, your business is all about and maybe the hours and that sort of thing or...
Well, when you come to a community and you want to start a business, of course, you're, you're going to this thing kind of blind, and what you do is you try to develop what you think is a good business strategy. Of course, if I spend a lot of money as try to advertise my business, well, then I may not have the funds that I need because I have an uncertain future. But what it is, is I have contacted many of the kinds of businesses that would do, deal with a taxi, and I've interacted with them as sorts and let them know of my availability with my phone number, et cetera. And, um, I'm not getting the support that I think that I should be getting from those businesses. Now, I know that this is relatively new. Maybe it may take some growing. Uh, I'm going to go through some growing pains to start a new business in a new area anyway, but, um, I don't know. I'm, I have some serious reservations at this point whether or not the public or the business community or even the government's willing to assist or even support this, uh, service. I don't know. But what I have done is I've interacted with them, and now I don't know just how this is going to go. But at this point, I do not see the support of the public, and I am offering a good service with a good vehicle. I have capable, you know, I'm capable. So what's the problem? I'm questioning whether or not this community is ready to make, to, uh, accept or support a regular taxi service.
I might just make a, a suggestion to you that you saw Mr. Renquist here tonight that, that spoke. He and his assistant, and they also have, uh, the retired executives, I think it's SCORE or something like that, that help people get off the ground with their businesses. It, it might be worth your time to, to go downtown and, and talk to the economic development folks, and they may have some, some ideas and some suggestions for you.
Um, I'm willing to explore just about anything, really, at this point, because I think that, you know, um, there is programs that may help. Uh, they may require some period of time, but really what I'm hoping for is an infusion of, uh, for, for one, just the support of the government and the business community to tell the public that, you know, we have this service and that we will lose if we fail to keep the service going. And this is what's, many of you, like you said, a drunken driver could potentially cause you a problem. And as this is a real reality, is that, uh, having service after 10 o'clock will maybe save lives. And you have to equate just whether or not the public is willing to make the kind of changes that would be necessary to support, because this is an economically driven business. I have to maintain a certain amount. It isn't just going to be there Thursday afternoon or Thursday evening. I mean, the public as a rule will have to support this service over a period of time. And whether or not they're able to do that, I don't know. But we will find out soon because I will say about 10 days is all it's going to take for me to earn the kind of income that I've seen, let's say, in the last week. It's going to be about 10 days, and I will have to make a, a serious choice. And that's, and I don't know if SCORE or any other long-term program is going to fit that need. But nonetheless, I think that you went about the right way of providing a, um, application and a city code that is beneficial to the public, but the public has to understand that, you know, the money doesn't, is to, to create the type of business that you need to have, that's responsible. The public has to support it. And without this, the support of the public, of course, or the business community, even the business community... business community by themselves, okay, could support a taxi, at least one taxi. But without that, you know, I can't just do it alone, you know, and it's not going to happen, and it could be years before you see another person come along. Certainly, you may never see another person with my level of experience, because like I said, I've been a taxi driver for about 16 years. And so I don't think that you're going to see anybody coming along doing this, especially in the middle of the night type of thing. You're not going to see this happen. So I think it's proven for me to come forward and say, "This is the realities of this business."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hile.
So thank you very much. I do appreciate it, and...
Okay. I think if you follow up with Mr. Anderson's suggestion to go down and talk to the people at the Economic Development Center, I think they could give you some very solid ideas and some suggestions. They're good people down there.
Thank you. I'll try to come to another meeting, and I'll keep you updated.
That would be good. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Finance Committee Report of June 25th. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with the Wilmer Public Library funding. Lori Ortega from the library informed us that the library's shortfall remains at $27,407, and unless this amount is received, it's her feeling that library hours would have to be cut. The minimum number of hours that the library can be open and still qualify for federal funds is 40 hours per week. And our library is currently open 59 and a half hours each week. We had some questions regarding comparisons to other libraries located in similar-sized cities, such things as tax capacity rates, maintenance of effort, and a bunch of other questions. Ms. Ortega explained that the other libraries in question probably provided different services than what Wilmer does, so accurate comparisons perhaps could not be accurately made. The committee did suggest that she once again review possibilities of cutting staff time by reducing the number of staff on hand at any one time and any other suggestions that she would think would be appropriate. And there was also a suggestion made that they do greater advertising for public donations. The committee noted that local government aid is probably going to be reduced for 2008, which could affect the city's future contributions to the library. If the library's 2007 shortfall is appropriated, the total maintenance of effort paid by the city for 2007 would be $342,498, and that's amount that remains on the books, and that's the floor moving forward. Concerns were discussed that the library will continue to have shortages in the future, even as early as next year. After a great deal of discussion, there was a motion made to fund the additional $27,407 from the library capital reserve account, which was established at the closeout of the library's local option sales tax funds. The motion was seconded to further discussion, for some further discussion. And it was pointed out that the library capital reserve account is intended for capital expenditures, and if additional funds continue to be taken out of the reserve account for operational purposes, that fund would be gone in five or six years. The motion maker, Mr. Gardner, stated that it was his intention that he made the motion that this would be a one-time occurrence only and that future funding would not come from that source. Councilmember Dacken felt that we were just delaying action, and these shortfalls will continue in the future. Following all of that and more discussion, there was a recommendation to introduce a resolution, and I will introduce that resolution to fund the 2007 library deficit of $27,407 from the library capital reserve account.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to fund the 2007 deficit for the library of $27,407 from the library capital reserve account. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor DeBleek?
Yeah, I think, you know, we had some discussion back when budget time about library, library budget, which has been delayed. We did some, some short-term things, but I think we need to fully fund our library, which this helps move us to that point. I just do have some concerns about the taking money from the library reserve account on a continuous basis. As you say, in about five years, that fund would be depleted, so, but I do support the fully funding our library.
Any other comments? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to point out, and I thank Councilmember Anderson for noting in the minutes that this motion that I made at Finance was to fund out of that capital reserve account for this time only. Any further funding, because this becomes part of our maintenance of effort, would have to come through the ad valorem tax. I do want to address one other small thing regarding what the city of Wilmer has done for their library in comparison to other regional centers. Everyone's adjusted net tax capacity is different, so perhaps a better comparison, since populations are different and so forth, is the percentage of tax capacity that each city allocates towards library services. The Department of Education's report in 2005, based upon information given to them by all the regional libraries, gives us some basis for comparison. For example, in Brainerd, they did approximately 2.06 percent, or $11.10 per capita, for funding their library. The city of Hutchinson, which is slightly higher population, yet 1.45 percent, or a little over $10 per capita. The city of Wilmer has done 3.3-some percent as of the latest report from the Department of Education, or $16.23 per capita. I think that is a substantial investment that the city of Wilmer has made, and I respect that there are those who think that we have not done what we've needed to do in terms of library funding. I respect those differences, but I would respectfully suggest that the city has done a pretty good job, especially in comparison to some of these other regional centers in funding libraries, in funding our own library, and I hope that we're able to continue that in the future.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you know better than anybody that 2008's not going to be a whole lot better. And in fact, 200, I think, $81,000 less in local government aid, so I continue to say that this is still a delaying action, that something is going to have to change, and I'll just leave it at that.
I'd like to ask our city administrator. Mick, you just returned from the Leagues Conference up in Duluth. Was there any talk about a special session being called, or is there any substantial talk about that, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was a lot of talk about the need for a special session. Of course, this was the League of Minnesota Cities, and cities have a vested interest in the governor calling a special session and reconsidering the omnibus tax bill. That's where the local government aid money was. I think the experts, for lack of a better word, the people that are maybe a little closer to state government than we are on a regular basis, were of the opinion that if the governor hadn't called that session by the end of last week, that the likelihood of it happening was not very good. That doesn't mean that it won't happen, but I think as each day goes by, the chances diminish more and more. I think when you sit down with Mr. Okins and myself to work on the budget, you're going to see that we're going to be operating on a number that Mr. Dacken mentioned. It's about $280,000 less in local government aid for 2008.
What concerns me is the loss of local government aid throughout rural Minnesota, because it does not impact the metropolitan area very much at all, whereas it directly impacts rural Minnesota. And collectively, you know, in Candyoye County and Redville County and Swift County, Pope County, all these counties out here, the loss of government support is growing, and there seems to be a disinterest in that at the state level. They just don't seem to see that as a concern.
Mr. Mayor, I won't pretend to know the formula for computing local government aid, but there are a number of greater Minnesota cities that in fact received increases in 2008 based on the current formula. However that formula is structured, it resulted in Wilmer losing $281,000. Had the tax bill passed and been signed by the governor, then all greater Minnesota cities would have seen an increase in local government aid, because I believe there was about $70 million included in the bill for that purpose. I think that you're not, I don't think cities are united behind this call for a special session because of the fact that some of them are perfectly content to move toward 2008, knowing that they're getting increases.
Right. Any other comments? Councilmember Reese?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to be just reiterating some of what other councilmembers have said in the, taking this $27,000 from the library capital reserve account is a quick fix. And then we're faced with the LGA cuts in 2008, and we have to still meet that level of funding to the library. I think that's going to put us, as a council, you as a mayor, and the staff, in a difficult position to develop a budget to supply the additional dollars and meet the ever-expanding needs within our community that we're facing as this community grows. I look at the minutes, and it says that we have to have, in order for us to qualify for federal funds, we have to have the library open 40 hours per week. And we're currently open 59 and a half hours. That indicates to me that there probably are some options. Options that people that use the library probably wouldn't be real thrilled with, however, faced with the budget dilemmas as a city, it may be something that has to be done in our, I can't remember what we call it, but our Wednesday sessions that we have with council.
The work sessions.
Our work sessions. The difference in funding for, or the per-capita funding for libraries was brought up at that time, and Mr. Gardner has reiterated some of that here today, and the differences that, and the higher costs that Wilmer is actually paying right now. So I really do have some difficulty with the current proposal that's in front of us and the ongoing funding of that same increase.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the governor uses the term sustainability a lot, and hard choices he uses a lot also. Rice Hospital is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I know that Rice Hospital, sitting on the board as the liaison, has had to lay off 17 people. When things are slow at the hospital, they ask people to go home early. And so, again, as I said at the committee meeting, you got to play with the hand you're dealt, okay? And was your decision that 3% was what the increase would be? And again, it's not going to be a whole lot easier in 2008, so, and the hospital has made those tough choices. Had to, because of dollars, lack of dollars coming in.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've, or at least I've heard pretty loudly and clearly, that the library is one of these essential services that we provide, and we need to do all that we can to keep it open. Now, we need to understand, we talked not harshly, but pretty directly to Lori at the Finance Committee meeting, that we need to look at alternatives, how we can save. Labor is the thing, the only thing that she has where she can really make savings. And we challenged her, and I think she heard that. We also told her that we weren't going to micromanage the library, that it was going to be up to her to run it efficiently and be creative in how we come up with some hopeful, some savings. And maybe that is reducing hours. I don't know. I think that we will be hard-pressed in 2008 to look at an increase, from my perspective. So I think we need to be thinking about how we move forward. I think that this is, this is an okay one-time fix. I understand the maintenance of effort. I understand the local government aid cuts. This isn't going to be a fun time preparing the budget for 2008, but I think this is something that we need to do for the city.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is for Lori, but have our fees to the Pioneer system gone up since '06 to '07 drastically, or how much do we pay to the system out of your budget here?
This is the first year that we've had over 50 years.
Lori, could you come up to the microphone, please?
In answer to your question, the basic answer is yes, our fee has gone up. Our fee has gone from zero to $18,000 that we pay Pioneerland for the services they provide the Wilmer Library. For the last 15-plus years, we haven't been asked to pay anything for those services. The money has always come from other sources. PLS is facing budget issues as well due to, same thing everybody else is facing, budget cuts due to a lack, a decrease in a lack of state and federal funding. They've gotten to the point where they need to ask individual libraries to pay for part of the services that they provide our library. So $18,000 is what our fee is for this year.
So to correct the problem, we probably need to have an outcry from the citizens to contact state and federal representatives in.
I would say that would be one thing that the public could do.
Right.
But that's not going to solve the entire situation. I mean, $18,000 was less than half of what my budget shortfall was for 2007. So there's still, there's larger issues still in play here besides that.
But you got to get through the hard times to get back to the good times, so...
I would say that, yeah. I'm trying to get through the hard time.
Yeah. Okay.
Lori, do you want to make any comments at all? I'll give you that opportunity if you want to. You don't have to. I'm just saying if you want to.
I guess the only comment that I would like to make is that I really, I understand where you all are coming from, and I know that there's difficult financial times ahead. I would like the opportunity to have my library funded for 2007 and take the next six months and work with everybody to resolve the ongoing funding issues for the library. We have six months to look at options. And you're right, it may not be sustainable. That choice needs to be made by the citizens of Wilmer and by the city council. Maybe, maybe there won't be a huge public outcry if we decrease our hours. But I'm, but I'm going to tell you right now that if my library isn't funded at the level that I've asked for, which I feel is very fair and the minimum amount that we need to keep the library open and functioning at the level... need to keep the library open and functioning at the level it functions now, that my course of action, and about the only course of action I have open to me, is to reduce the number of hours that the library is open. And that's, that's the solution that we may need to look at. I, you know. But I'm just, I would like to see it funded for '07. We're six months through the year. The $27,000, if you choose not to fund me, is going to equate to the library being closed for 27 days between now and the end of the year. How I do that has yet to be decided, but basically it's $1,000 a day to keep the library open on a Friday, and that's about what it would take to balance that out. So I'm just asking for, I think that, even though I don't totally agree with taking the money from the Capital Reserve, I feel as a one-time option, it may be the way for us to go this time, and then we need to, I'd really like to take some time to sit down and work with everybody to resolve the ongoing issues that we face in keeping the library open and running for the city of Wilmere.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
John, do you wish to make any comments?
I know, I did, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity, but I think Lori addressed it, if we don't get funding on Friday.
Okay, all right. Councilmembers, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know what the average hours per week are at the rest of the libraries in the PLS? Does somebody know that? I mean, are we 59 and a half, or the rest of them 59 and a half, are they at 40, or are we above and beyond them also? Would you know that, Lori?
Thank you, Mayor.
Less or more hours? I mean, what?
No, it's more. Oh, yeah, I think it's more. He doesn't.
Monty may, used to have more, now they still do it, but I think Monty has more hours.
Monty does have more hours, a few, maybe three, four hours a week more than we have. By the way, thank you, Mayor. Small library, not open on a Friday.
So it's $1,000 a day to open the library for an eight-hour period?
For a Friday.
For it.
From 9 until 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and on the table, and it's been seconded, to draw the money out of the Capital Reserve Fund. Are you ready to vote on this? Kevin, is this a roll call? Roll call, please. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson? Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nays. The resolution passes. The amount of $27,407 will be routed to the library from the Library Capital Reserve account. All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator.
Back to Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second item on our agenda had to do with a request from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities talking about their special session resolution. Staff explained to us that the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is asking councils to pass a resolution in support of a 2007 special legislative session to pass the omnibus tax, previously vetoed by Governor Pawlenty. The committee had some concerns, and one of them we had to do with, that there may be other issues included in this bill that the city isn't aware of, and also that there are probably adequate procedures in place through the legislative leadership to prompt a special session. So we took that for information only. Final item on our agenda were summary reports. We looked at the May Rice Trust, the May CVB report, the May RAC-8 report, May Local Option Sales Tax Report, the May EDC Report, and the April Rice Hospital Report. That was for information only. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. I have a question. Since there was no recommendation on that special resolution to support a special legislative session, Mick, do you know where that's going? You know, are cities signing off on that, or have you heard anything? Was that brought up?
It was, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it was brought up at the meeting of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and it was a mixed bag. There were communities that felt very strongly that their councils should pass these resolutions and send them on to the governor. Other communities chose to have either the mayor or the city manager or administrator write a letter to the governor, and other communities chose to ignore it. There was no consensus amongst the group.
Did that seem to, again, fall down the lines of cities that were going to get money as opposed to cities that were losing money?
And I don't know that I could make that judgment based on that conversation.
Mm-hmm. Is there any staff recommendation on this? Let it lie, or? Okay. All right. And council doesn't want to do anything about that? Is that the matter? All right, then we have the minutes to file. Those in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is the Public Work Safety Committee Report of June 26. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda was, the committee was informed of a grant that, from the Local Trail Connections Program through the DNR, of $65,000. This $65,000 will be used in constructing the trail connection in the north area of the city to the Glacial Lakes Trail. The grant money is proposed to be in a $300,000 walkpath project to be constructed this year, and we would also be using some of our local option sales tax for the remaining portion of the project. Oops, I'm sorry. There are three segments, three parts to this project. First one is widening the path that starts at North Business 71 and follows the Civic Center to the trailhead. Right now, it's a four-foot concrete sidewalk, and this would be expanded to an eight-foot sidewalk. Then there would be an extension of the path around the area of the Flags of Honor and north to the KPC or Cooperatives property. And then it would also go across at the Signals and continue in front of the MinWest Technology Campus. The third portion would be an overlay of the path that is currently in place on Robins Island. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution that we accept the grant from the Minnesota DNR and apply the $65,000 towards the walkpath project.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the grant of $65,000 from the Department of Natural Resources for a walkpath project. Further comment? Is the walkpath at Robins Island the road that goes around the island, or is it?
Yes.
Less than that?
Road.
The road? Well, that's good, because that road's in rough shape. That's great. All right, any other comments? A roll call? Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes.
Next item on the agenda was the fact that Mr. Holmes from Donahue and Associates was at our meeting, and he presented a proposed budget revision to the design phase of the wastewater treatment plant relocation project. As they have completed the, or when they were working on the design phase, Donahue performed services beyond the scope of their agreement. And during that same time, Donahue and city staff determined that some elements thought to be needed could be eliminated, saving program costs and therefore lowering the interceptor line, thus eliminating the need for a new pumping station. Fees for the additional work scope is less than the fees for the deleted scope. Allocation of the project fees should be adjusted. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve the budget revisions to the design phase of the wastewater treatment plant relocation project.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution which approves the budget revisions for the treatment plant relocation project. Further comment about this? Roll call? Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes.
The next item is in regards to the taxi lanes at our new airport, and as we ensure we all recall, they were built at 20 feet, and we're now going to expand them to 30 feet to accommodate the aircraft that are based at our airport. The city's intending to use non-primary entitlement funds from the FAA, but due to a narrow timeline, this may not be possible. Discussions were held with the FAA and the additional work by change order to an existing contract. Well, since our meeting, staff has had discussions with FAA, and it has been determined that a change order to an existing contract, which we have with Dunick Brothers, is possible to complete the taxi lane widening. The 2004 grading paving and electrical contract is available for amendment, and the project would be financed through non-primary entitlement funds the airport receives on an annual basis. So, Mr. Mayor, there's a little bit of change from what's in the, in our packet. There will still be four resolutions. The first one would be accepting the grant from the FAA in the amount of $211,375. So I would introduce that resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution to accept a grant from FAA of $211,375. Further comment? Roll call? Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes.
Then the one change that would have to be made, and that would, from what our packet says, we would need to authorize a change order to the 2004 contract, grading, paving, and electrical contract, which was awarded to Dunick Brothers Incorporated. And that change order would be in the amount of $194,287. So I would introduce a resolution for that change order, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a change order with Dunick Brothers of, from 2004 in the amount of $194,000 and some extra dollars there to do this work. Further comment? I have a, Mick, you want to say something? Oh, okay. Mel, I have a question. Right now, the taxi lanes are 20 feet wide, and the aprons from all these hangars come right down to the taxi lane, right?
That's correct.
So if we're making the taxi lane 30, are we now going to be, are they going to start cutting up the lips of those aprons, or what? Do they run right over the edge of those aprons?
When, when it came to our attention that we needed to go 30 feet, when they poured all but maybe one or two of the aprons, they left them five feet short. So if you go out and look, most of the concrete is within five feet of the taxiway, of the taxi lane itself. And then they poured maybe some temporary asphalt in there. In some cases, they put some concrete, but it's a separate piece that can be removed.
And the aprons that they didn't do that on, they'll just have to cut them?
They'll, they'll be cut, or it will match up to it.
And then this taxi lane is going to be asphalt, or is it cement?
That's, it'll be asphalt.
All 30 feet of it?
We, yes.
And there's three taxi lanes out there, right between?
There's four.
Four of them? This covers all four taxi lanes?
This would cover everything, yes.
And what about the taxi lanes that are going to be built eventually by the T, by the new T hangars?
They're, they're wide enough to handle the plane that can be put in the Ts.
And then that hangar that was moved in there from Bruce Jaeger, that large hangar?
That.
Did that have wide enough taxi lanes in it?
Yes, yeah. Those are 20 feet as well, but they're adequate for those aircraft that go in those. Those aren't as big a units as what the single unit are in the private group.
Does this put to rest this whole issue, then? I mean, is this the last?
It, yes, it should be.
Of the change orders and all that?
Yes.
I've heard you, I've watched you nod back there before, so. Thank you, Mel. All right, we have a resolution that's been seconded. Any other comments? Roll call? Councilmember DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes.
Then the next item was another grant, and that's for an in-car camera grant, and that's also from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, and comes through the Office of Justice Programs. These are available, these grants are available to local law enforcement agencies and allow them to purchase in-car camera systems. Our current six systems are 2002 models, and these, this would be a upgrade to our current system. I believe the chief said it goes to a digital system, is that correct? So it would be a much better system than we have currently, and there have been repairs made.
Preliminary budget.
To adopt the preliminary budget.
That's correct.
All right, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary budget for these expanded taxiways. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
And there's one more item under the taxi lane widening, and that's the budget. But is that still a preliminary budget, or is that a budget? Are we adopting the budget?
That would still be a, I guess we could, we could adjust it down to 235,000 now that we know the number. If we'd like, but I would, I would still call it a preliminary budget. We can take a formal budget through when we take the, some other actions through that may be needed on the taxi lanes.
Right now, the motion should be.
Preliminary budget.
To adopt the preliminary budget.
That's correct.
All right, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary budget for these expanded taxiways. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item was in regards to compliance checks, and local law enforcement agencies, such as our police department, can receive grants from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for these compliance checks at our licensed establishments that serve liquor within the city. We get $30 per compliance check, and we can have up to two checks per license in each year. And our police department applied for the grant in May, and have been informed that they were successful in getting this grant. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the grant and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract with the state of Minnesota.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for a resolution to accept a grant from the Department of Public Safety for local law enforcement agencies for compliance checks. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Under miscellaneous, Councilmember Dockin informed the committee of an incident with an aggressive dog within the fourth ward, and the police department was called out. And after a brief discussion of current leash law regulations, it was determined that staff should research the policies of other communities on aggressive dog behavior. So, they will be doing that. There was no action taken on that, and that's for information only, Mr. Mayor. So, unless there's questions, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Mel, there's a letter up here from SEH. Are we supposed to deal with that someplace?
Yeah, that's correct. That's an agenda item.
Is that the T-hanger bids?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks. Next, then, is a consideration of airport T-hanger bids. I'm going to step ahead. Okay, Mel, you want to explain that, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on June 28th, we opened bids for the T-hangers out at the new airport, and we had two options in there, 10-unit and a 12-unit T, based on, we wanted the alternative on, based on how the bids would come in. We received a total of seven bids. The low bid was for both the 10-unit and the 12-unit were below the engineer's estimate, and we had dollars budgeted in the preliminary budget to be able to award the 12-unit bid in the amount of $530,561. So, it's a staff recommendation to award the 12-unit option to Brightbach Construction of El Rosa, Minnesota, in an amount of $530,561.99.
Thanks, Mel. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the contract bid to Brightbach Construction of El Rosa for the T-hanger bid. Councilmember Reese.
Mel, you may have said it, and I may have missed it, but what was our estimate on that? Did we have an estimate?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 685. All right. And we had two bids? That there was no unit price given? I mean, what happened there?
Correct. It's a unit price bid, and what they had done is just extended a price into the FAR column and not provided a unit bid. And it's specifically clear in the bidding instructions that a unit bid, unit price governs, and unit price has to be filled in.
Did you have any discussions with them, why they didn't do that?
Yes, we called them immediately after the bid.
I mean, it's unfortunate, because one of them was significantly lower.
Yes, you're right. Yep.
Yeah, I remember that, because we had a project at one time where there was a decimal point put in the wrong place on one of our paving projects. That's many years ago. And we, we accepted the bid, and it went all the way to court, and that contractor couldn't take the bid because his extended numbers were right, but just a decimal point was in the wrong place. So, I understand that.
All right, any other comments about this? Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the 12-hanger option. Now, refresh my memory. Does this take care of us, or are we, we're putting another hangar out there, or how are we going to get up to the needed number? Didn't we talk about?
We are, we are in the process, you recall, as an option to building a larger T-hanger, we are now in the process of trying to acquire the T-hanger that Wilmer Air Service relocated to the field. Those, that one, along with this one, should meet our needs.
Okay, thank you.
That'd give us 18 total, then, right? Six from Wilmer Air Service and 12 new ones?
Yep.
And that's what we want to do. We want to get to 18. Okay. Any other comments about this? Councilmember Dockin. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, how many people do we have on the waiting list to use T-hangers?
Well, I believe at the, at the current time, there was, there was 15, but then there was three that, that weren't, that are housed already, and, and so the 18 would accommodate the 15 that we had on a preliminary list.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
I'm going to call on Jerry Gesh. I think you have a guest you want to introduce to the council tonight? Wake up, Jerry. Put in a long night tonight.
Jerry Gesh, a member of the Utilities Commission. I'd like to introduce our new commissioner, our new general manager, Bruce Groom, and he's here in town now and working, so.
Bruce?
Good evening, Bruce, and welcome to Wilmer.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Like Jerry said, my name is Bruce Groom, and just moved into the area, took over for Mike Mitchell, so got some big shoes to fill there, but it looks like they're in pretty good shape. Got a couple issues on the front burner, so we'll be addressing those as soon as I can get up to speed and get a handle on what's all happening, so I'm glad to be here.
Bruce, can, would you entertain a couple questions?
Sure.
Councilmembers, have at 'em.
You hunting fish? That's my, or Dockin? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Wilmer. We're glad to have you. Can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Sure. I've been in the utility field pretty much my whole career. I have an electrical engineering degree from University of Wisconsin Platteville. I did some work at a few different utilities, including Conwell Edison in Chicago, Indiana Municipal Utilities in Iowa, and Decana Utilities in Wisconsin, is where I just came from. So, variety of utility and municipal experience, and looking forward to being in a new municipal.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBleek?
I'd just like to say welcome to Wilmer, Bruce, and look forward to, I think there's many challenges at the utilities right now, and look forward to having you work on those and get through, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've received a very warm welcome. I commend the group that was put together to recruit me and bring me here. They were very professional and were very good at explaining all my questions and making me feel comfortable about coming here.
Bruce, you have experience both in the private sector and the public sector, then?
That's correct.
Which do you prefer?
Public sector.
Right answer. Right answer, Bruce. You were at Con Edison in Chicago, huh?
Yep, yep, that's a big one.
Do they still own Chicago down there?
Not as well as they used to, that's for sure.
Yeah, it wasn't too long ago that Chicago tried to go public, and Con Edison wouldn't tolerate that.
Yeah, they're, they're a very big corporation, but they've been being chiseled away. Their generation assets have been sold off, and that was a lot of their, their power with their nuclear plants that they had, and there's been a lot of turmoil. There was a lot of fluff in the big investor-owned utility that I got to see firsthand, and can see why their rates were as high as they were.
Good. Anyone else here? You're being awful gentle on this guy, you know? Bruce, you know, Bruce DeBleek is the council liaison to the utilities from the city council, but periodically, you might see other council members show up at utility meetings, and they're certainly invited to stop by your office, you know, to visit, and sometimes they'll do that. I don't think, you know, we annoy you, but periodically, council members will come over and they'll want to visit with you, and, and I will be doing that also, so every so often, I'll, I'll give you a call and drop in, so.
Yeah, that's great. I really encourage open communication. I'll be wandering over to the city and talking to these guys a lot, too, and making sure we're all on the same page, and we know what's all happening with each other.
Yeah, that's good. One thing I would ask, Bruce, is, you know, we have regular, you know, department head meetings here in the city, and they're held at City Hall. Our city administrator calls, and I'd like to see either you or your designated person attend those meetings on a regular basis.
That sounds like a good idea.
It is. It's good for coordination, so please stay, you know, work closely with our city administrator on that.
I will do.
All right, anything else? Well, welcome aboard, and we'll be hearing from you on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, we are down to the announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance, Dennis?
No finance meeting.
Public Works, Public Safety?
No meeting scheduled, Mr. Mayor.
Community Development?
You know, now's community development for July 11th, 4:45.
July 11th, 4:45, Community Development.
That would be Wednesday.
Okay.
See you Tuesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. July 4th is Wednesday, so it's a week later.
Bruce is asking, Bruce.
I think Bruce Peterson is asking if we should go with, with July 10.
If there's no Public Works, Public Safety meeting, that's an option, being I have two other meetings the night of the 11th.
You want to go with the 10th?
We can do the 10th, yeah.
All right, July 10th, Bruce. 4:45, that's a Tuesday. Rick, anything on labor?
How did I know?
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
You are the chairman of that committee.
Oh, my God, the committee meets so often, I get confused.
Okay, Mr. Gardner.
You just, you just needed to hear a different voice saying no meeting. However, we will probably be meeting on the 25th, just a heads up for the committee members.
Labor, July 25th, 4:45. Sorry, Steve, I missed a step there. July 25th, 4:45. Any other committee meetings? There's nothing in terms of COPS meetings or anything like that. I would just comment that Wilmerfest, you know, we're going to get a report from Wilmerfest. Have they called you yet? I invited them to come to a new meeting, or to a meeting with the new royalty.
16.
16th, they'll be here on the 16th. So, if you have any questions about Wilmerfest, they had a very good weekend, excellent weather, and visitors from, you know, international visitors, Winnipeg this year. So, very nice festival, and from what I understand, everything ran very smoothly, so. Bruce, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mayor, hi, members of the council. I'd just like to announce that the first meeting, the organizational meeting of the Housing Task Force, will be next Monday evening, July 9th, at 7:00 PM at the fire station meeting room. And the final adoption of the airport zoning ordinance for the new airport will occur next Wednesday evening at a 5:30 meeting of the Airport Zoning Board, the Joint Airport Zoning Board. So, that will put our whole airport zoning issue to rest once and for all.
I'm not, Airport Zoning Board? Who's that?
There is a Joint Airport Zoning Board that's made up of members, representatives of the city, the county, two townships, and the city of Penak.
Do they ever meet?
Yes, they do.